Good evening, this is a public meeting of the Low Zoning Board of Appeals for August 10, Before we get started, could everybody please check your electronic device, make sure it's either turned off or turned as low as possible? Our first order of business is under New Business. This is an appeal of the Building Commissioner's determination. This is EB 2015-29. The applicant is Lexi Development LLC, property located at 1857.1 Middlesex Street. And the petition, Appeal of Building Commissioner's Determination for Appeal of Issuance of the Building Permit, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Sections 8 and 15. And I see Mr. Housler is at the podium. So, Mr. Housler, to start, could you just briefly give us, the board, an overview of why you're here this evening?
Certainly. Again, for your record, Douglas Housler from Lampert, Housler &amp; Rodman, representing Lexi Development. Lexi owns property at 1881 Middlesex Street, which is literally on Middlesex Street. Behind it is the subject of tonight's hearing, the locus at 1857.1. That locus is currently the subject of the development of the proposed collegiate charter school. Lexi is asking the Zoning Board of Appeals to overturn the Building Commissioner's decision to issue a building permit to allow the charter school to be constructed on a piece of land that is owned by a for-profit entity known as Commons Wealth LLC, which is leasing that property to another private charter school operated by non-elected officials. And there are several misconceptions that we need to clear up for this board to understand the context. Because of the submittals by Commons Wealth, I think we need to clear the record. The first misconception is that Lexi is playing the role of almost an extortionist. That's just inaccurate. Lexi purchased 1881 Middlesex Street because when it had the option to develop the property behind it at 1857.1, the charter school site, for condominium development, it was told by the City of Lowell and by the same engineers, that are the engineers of record for this charter school, that it did not meet frontage requirements. You couldn't even submit plans. And that hasn't changed. The deeds, there are no additional frontage that's changed hands. It was 15 feet in 2007 and '08. It's 15 feet today that's owned by 1857.1. No more, no less. So, it's never changed in terms of that length of frontage. Lexi said, "We'll go out and we'll buy the frontage." We're required to do that to develop the parcel. It went out, it acquired a parcel of deed, of record, for $425,000, 1881 Middlesex Street. There's this perception, we're trying to get more money than what we paid for it. That is not true. It is looking to get the exact same amount that it paid. No more and no less. There's nothing extortionate about it. It's looking to recoup its initial purchase price. When Lexi sought to obtain the frontage, it was the same as it is today, 15 feet. A second misconception of Lexi is that it didn't file its objections to the process in a timely manner. That's what's been asserted. The Building Commissioner issued a permit to build on or about June 9 of 2015, and I was notified of that issuance on June 12. On June 16, our office issued a letter by hand and by email to Mr. Shanahan requesting him to revoke the building permit. And at or about that same time, I conferred with the Director of Community Planning and Development to make sure that I was in compliance with the process, not wanting to waive any rights. And he confirmed to me that as a prerequisite to getting any matter before this board, we had to get a denial letter from the Building Commissioner. So, we had to go to the Building Commissioner and say, "Reconsider because of reasons A, B, C, D." If he said yes, then we'd be fine, we don't need to do anything further. If he said no, then and only then can I come before this board and ask you to intervene." And that's what we did. So, that letter was delivered to the Building Commissioner on June 16. In fact, he never issued a denial letter until July 17, almost a month later. And when he did, he said he acknowledged, "He thought he had previously issued a denial letter, but he didn't, and he acknowledged that in a letter to me dated July 17." Within the week of getting his denial letter, we filed all of the required applications to this board. We are timely. So, let's get past that misconception as well. The third misconception, which really is at the heart of the matter tonight here, is that Commons Wealth and the charter school keep saying they are following due process and they filed all the required paperwork and they've supplied all the evidence to comply with the zoning bylaws of the City of Lowell. That is inaccurate. How is it inaccurate? It's the same game that charter school and Commons Wealth and the prior developer have been playing all the way through with this. As recently as three weeks ago, the charter school came before the planning board and said, "We want to add a 16,000 additional amount of space to the site." Now, on its face, that's a major modification to a site plan. On its face, just like your 25-foot frontage requirement is on its face, there's nothing in dispute. 16,000 square feet, and the bylaw says if you have 10,000 or more, it triggers my major site plan review or modification with public notice, full site plan review. The charter school and, with the assent of its owner, came before the City of Lowell and represented, "We don't need to do that. That rule and regulation doesn't apply to us." I didn't even have to utter a syllable. The planning board completely summarily rejected it. I won a case without uttering a syllable. They spent 15 minutes arguing with the planning board that they complied. The planning board just shook its head in disbelief and unanimously denied it. That is exactly what this application process is being involved in tonight. They've said all along now, belatedly, 25-foot frontage doesn't mean 25-foot frontage. In fact, they're making moot the entire concept of frontage. Under your bylaws, it says 25 feet. It doesn't say it in your bylaws. It's been confirmed by their engineer of record, who on his stamped plan said, "Variants required," pages one and pages three of their site plan. That hasn't changed. So, when the planning board initially endorsed their plan, it was with the full expectation that your board would be involved, excuse me, be involved to review the issuance of the variance. To my knowledge, you've never had a hearing on it, you've never issued any findings, and you haven't been presented with a single fact to support that there have been any changes in the linear feet. There's zero. It's still 15. So, now instead, Commons Wealth and the charter school take this very novel approach, and they say, "The bylaws don't apply because we have easements that allow us to go to and fro. And those easements now give us all the required findings of access and egress and safety." That's not what the zoning bylaw says. The zoning bylaw doesn't say easements constitute frontage. If they did, the zoning bylaw would say that. But there's no exception to that. There's no annotations in your code that say that. So, at the time that the site plan was even approved, it should never have been approved unless a variance was going to be granted. And it's better than just simply the engineers of record for both the prior owner, the present owner, and the same tenant, using the same attorney, all said, "We were going to need a variance." That's the plans they submitted, not us, "they." The application tonight seeks to overturn the building permit that should never have issued. The application was never filed with the ZBA. In fact, there was an application filed in November of 2012 by Attorney Alites, looking for a variance. And then during the public hearing process, he eventually came back to this board and withdrew that application, and I have it on the tape and I have it on a desk, at which he said to this board and reported, "It's a moot issue because we're acquiring other property from an abutter." And he withdrew the application. So, attorney for, engineer for, prior owner, same tenant, charter school, all understood a variance was needed. And now, a new owner comes in and says, "You're misreading the bylaw." I don't think so. But more importantly, it's not for me to determine that or for the owner to determine that. It's for you to determine that. That's your power. It's not my power. It's not the planning board's power. It's not the City Law Department's power. The first instance on the interpretation of the zoning bylaws is with this board, the ZBA. It is the only board entitled to grant a variance. And let's make no mistake about it. What they need is a variance. Easements do not suffice. Let's take a look at their novel approach and the implications it has for this board on two levels. First, their approach is, a property owner has one foot of frontage. It has a ton of land in the back, but it has one foot of frontage. It can go to an abutter and say, "Give me an easement for 25 feet, give 50 feet, whatever the required frontage is. Give me that additional land for an easement, not an ownership and fee." And now I can say, "We've got the frontage." Really? That's a unique interpretation of frontage. I don't know of any case law that supports it, especially when it comes to the issue of private ownership. Frontage means no more than frontage, and it's linear feet that you measure it by. And it's very clear in the code. And if there's an exception, it's for this board to determine, and that exception is called a variance. They seek to usurp the power of this board. They seek to turn it over to the planning board and the City Law Department or to the owner. I don't think that's right, and nor does my client. So, if you don't overturn the decision of the Building Commissioner, who issued a permit that on its face is legally deficient, you are basically saying, "We are no longer the board that determines variances as to frontage." I don't know of any legislation that's been filed or home rule petitions or anything that's changing the powers of this board. This board alone is entitled to do that. So, a private property owner, and you can imagine the context this is going to come into, residential, commercial, industrial, you don't have the ownership of 25 feet of frontage. You just get an easement by contract. No deeds exchanged, simply an easement. And now we have frontage. That's unique. I would argue that that interpretation or approach makes frontage absolutely meaningless. It makes the application or interpretation literally shifting the power from the ZBA to any other board, planning, city law, maybe engineers even, owners of property, who can conspire together and make up whatever terms they want by contract. That's not what the zoning code is all about. The hearing tonight focuses exclusively on the issue of frontage. It doesn't seek to address all the allegations that are in the lawsuits that are pending with Commons Wealth or its prior owner or developer. What matters here is that there's a plain and important issue relating to frontage and development of land within the City of Lowell, and that the discretion of the City Law Department and the planning board is not material to what you have to do. It's your power to decide what's a variance and what isn't. It goes to the very heart of your board's power-making and authority. And if you don't overturn the Building Commissioner's decision, you might as well eliminate the need for variances as to frontage forevermore, because you have made the entire process of frontage moot. Thank you.
So, I have a couple of questions, both for the city, and I also have the city solicitor's office here this evening. I'll open this up to either one of you. You've heard some of the comments made by Attorney Housler regarding why he's here this evening. What I'd like to ask before both of you is, could you update the board on why we're here this evening? Attorney Housler made some comments around timely filings. He made some comments around planning board decisions, the Building Commissioner. What I'd like to hear back from the city is, could I have some information regarding some of the, I guess, statements and comments that the Attorney Housler has made in reference to this petition, please?
Good evening, members of the board and those in attendance. My name is Kenneth Rosetti. I am an attorney in the city solicitor's office here for the City of Lowell. Mr. Chairman, are you asking just my general reflections on Attorney Housler's presentation or was there something more specific? Are you asking about the issue of timeliness?
Well, I think we could start with the, was the petitioner file everything in a timely fashion? I'll start with that.
Well, that's an interesting question, Mr. Chairman, because I'm quite frankly still confused about what it is specifically the gentleman, the petitioner, believes he's appealing. Because if the appeal is as to the June 9, 2015 issuance of the building permit, what was submitted by the petitioner is outside the timeframe for a timely appeal of the issuance of the permit. If the appeal is as to the Building Commissioner's decision not to revoke the permit that was issued, then the gentleman has an argument about timeliness. I would note that there was not a timely appeal when the Building Commissioner issued an opinion in February of 2015 saying that essentially rights of way provided adequate addressing of the frontage issue with respect to the pending application for a permit. Only more recently, after the actual permit issued, has the petitioner opted to take issue with the Building Commissioner's action.
So, to any other points that Attorney Housler made?
Yes, on the issue of frontage, there was a, I would direct the board's attention to the case of Ellsworth versus Town of Mansfield. This was a decision by Judge Long of the Land Court. The decision issued on July 25, 2011. Like this case, the construction at issue in the Ellsworth case was a construction of a school, so there were Dover Amendment issues that had to be taken into consideration. And Judge Long, in ruling on summary judgment, considered whether easements could essentially address the issue of frontage with respect to the construction of a school. And Judge Long, in his decision, essentially held that easements at issue satisfied what is the overarching reason why we have frontage requirements, means of access. And in that case, there were two easements that the court said, "You know what? These address access to the property." And in fact, the easements together meet Mansfield's frontage requirement for length of the footage. So, given that we're dealing with a school and given that the easements essentially provide the functional equivalent of the bylaw requirement for frontage, he granted relief for allowing the project to proceed with respect to the school that was being constructed in that Mansfield case. Attorney Housler brings up a condominium project. Therein lies a critical difference between his client's former ability or opportunity to build versus a charter school. We're talking about a project operating under the Dover Amendment. The condominium project is not a Dover Amendment project. I think that's a critical difference for this board to keep in mind.
I'm sorry. You said Dover Amendment, which project is not?
Condominium is not. So, those are key points that should be considered by this board in evaluating tonight's petition.
May I address that, Mr. Chairman?
Not yet, Mr. Housler.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, Swathy, do you have anything you'd like to add at this point?
I don't have anything more to add other than what our city solicitor has mentioned here, because we definitely had a request to get a final determination for the frontage back February of this year. And it was only following that, that the request for the building permit was submitted. And I believe that was done because they had a valid Building Commissioner's decision with that determination. So, the city office, the Development Services Office, as well as the Building Department, has been following the protocol in a timely fashion, so.
Mr. Rosetti, do you have anything else you want to add at this point? Because I guess what I'm trying to get my arms around is, you know, this board, at least since I've been on it, we've never had a petition like this come before us, so this is kind of foreign. And I'm really, I read through everything that was presented to us, whether it came from the city or it came from Attorney Housler. And there was also some submissions by Attorney Pellegrino. And since there's already been decisions made in the past, both by, well, by the planning board especially, the site plan and the special permit, and in reading through that, I did not see one condition that talked to frontage. I also saw a document regarding the planning board meeting that the city solicitor's office, whether it came from the city solicitor directly or someone within the office, that they made a determination regarding the frontage. Could you speak to that, if you could, please? The communication that was sent to the Chairman Linehan regarding the frontage issue?
Well, two points. First, with respect to the actual communication, the attorney-client privilege protects from disclosure the contents of the communication. I will say that it is the Law Department's position that the frontage requirements are met by reason of easements in place in this case. I would also add, and I think you just made a key point, Mr. Chairman, when you asked me for additional input, I wanted to make the point you just made a moment ago, sir, which is that there's no order of condition in the planning board decision, as you point out, respecting frontage. Attorney Housler points to a remark in a plan document prepared by the engineer for the applicant. So, I mean, in the first instance, there's a question of whether that stray notation in a plan document can be even chargeable to the applicant, because it was not the applicant who actually made that stray mark. But again, putting that aside, frontage was not an order of condition in the planning board's multi-point, multifaceted decision spanning several pages.
Well, I mean, based on evidence and public meetings, I mean, obviously, there was a vote taken by the planning board previously. And I don't know for a fact if Attorney Housler was there or not, or Lexi Development was there. I can only go on what I know at this point. So, the Building Commissioner, when he made his determination for the building permit, did he act within his right to make that determination?
Yes.
Okay, so he didn't exceed his authority?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Okay. Okay, Attorney Housler, do you have anything else you want to add? And when I ask, "Do you want to add?", I'm trying to be very careful about, I'm not looking for a long night of legalese.
Neither am I.
I'm not saying you're going to do that, but I really don't want to get into legal arguments, because A, I'm not a lawyer, and B, that's why I got the Law Department here.
I couldn't agree with you more.
But if you could, if you have something that you want to add, I'll listen to it.
Couple of things that distinguish Dover Amendment from here. This is private property being, is owned by a private developer. It's not owned by the Commonwealth or a division of the Commonwealth. That's a major difference. So, respectfully, any reference to the Dover Amendment is not applicable to a private property owner, which in turn is a major distinction in the Land Court case that's being cited by the Law Department. That involved the Dover Amendment with a public, public school, owned on land by the town, not by a private developer. Major distinction point. Number two, Land Court decision is only that one case with one specific set of facts. It's not binding. It's not precedential value, can't be cited as such in the Commonwealth. It's not SJC. Third piece, I don't understand why the Law Department has to provide any kind of an opinion, because it's your decision. I was unaware, and I am presently unaware of, any member of this board requested the Law Department to provide an opinion. So, it's a question from the applicant through the chair to the members of the board. Did any member of this board request a memorandum from the City of Law Department?
You were asking me a question?
Yes, sir. Did the City Law Department, did any member of the board ask the City Law Department to opine on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, I would just state that, again, as I pointed out a moment ago, the attorney-client privilege protects from disclosure communications between city officials and legal counsel for the city regarding requests for advice and the dispensing of advice.
I didn't ask that. I asked simply if there was a request made. I didn't ask for the substance. There's a major difference, and I would think Mr. Rosetti knows that.
Well, I'm not answering the question.
Very well, thank you.
I think Mr. Rosetti's speaking for me regarding that, as far as this board goes.
I understand. And then with respect to the comments that the, quote, "Stray marks on plans by the engineer", this, it's anything but. Anytime you act on plans, or the planning board, or anybody in the Building Department, when plans are stamped by a professional engineer and they denote variants required, I suggest very strongly to you, that's not a stray mark. Those are plans that are prepared by a professional and are filed with a client's consent or an applicant's consent. They're not done in the blind. And those plans are not done just once, and there wasn't a mistake on one page and not followed on another. It was repeatedly made, because the intention was, this issue has to come before this board for a variance. And no one seems to want to address that that's what was represented to the public, to my client, and to every abutter, and to this board, and to the planning board. And suddenly, it's a case of, it doesn't matter. And I want that explanation on a record to my client, because I think that violates law. And if this board can't revoke the decision, then a superior court judge or Land Court judge can. But let's get those records out and get the statements and the positions clearly enunciated. I think it's solely within your power. I don't see you having the opportunity to abdicate that power to another board. This board makes very tough decisions all the time. I have a lot of respect for it. I've seen it in action. I don't know why now, for a private property owner, it would misinterpret the law, and especially on the application I gave to you. Where's the stopgap when some private property owner comes to you without minimal frontage, a foot, five feet, 10 feet, whatever it is? When are you going to be able to say, "Well, frontage doesn't mean frontage, it means an easement?" And they try to cite the Law Department on that? Is that the precedent you want to set? I hope not. I trust not. And I trust that you'll understand my client's perspective, a private property owner who said, "If I don't like the way things are going, I have a stopgap, and it's that variance request when I can have all of these issues reviewed by an impartial board." And now they're saying, "You don't have that right. It's a non-issue." After they've represented publicly of record. And that hasn't changed. After they've represented publicly, of record, and that hasn't changed. It's what was said in 2012, was said in 2013, and it's still on the plans, variance required. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Rosetti, do you have any comments in regards to what Mr. Hausler just mentioned?
I guess I would just add that Attorney Hausler has certainly more than hinted that he's looking at litigating here. So that's what I take away from his response. He's emphasizing the issue of the plans, but again, I would point out that the planning board decision made no mention of a frontage requirement. And we believe that the Ellsworth decision can be considered by this court. While it is not an appellate decision, it does offer what we believe to be a factual and legal overlap with respect to the pending matter, sufficient to give counsel and direction to this board and its decision-making.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Ms. Hausler? Okay.
Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right. I guess at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public. And if you plan on speaking on behalf of this petition, you need to sign out the podium with your name and address before addressing the board. So anyone here that's in favor of this petition? In favor? Favor? Hearing none. That portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone here that's in opposition? Yes, sir.
Good evening, members. My name is Rafer Pellegrino, and I'm here on behalf of Commonwealth, which is the owner of the property. And I understand that Attorney Hausler has gone into a great many issues, many of which I believe are not relevant to this board's consideration this evening. So I'll try to refrain my remarks to what I think is specific. First and foremost, just as a house clearing matter, this is a public school, not a private school, as alleged by Attorney Hausler. Second, in response to the chairman's question, which Attorney Hausler did not comment or respond to, Attorney Hausler and Lexi, its members, were present at the planning board meeting the night they voted in favor of the building, site building plan. They argued the same objection they're making here today. It went on for quite some time, I can't recall that exact period of time, for a couple hours. I have the CD, the video from the meeting, during the meeting was specifically, this issue was specifically addressed. The second thing is, the entire crux of Attorney Hausler's position is the same as it was before the planning board. It's also the same as it is in their lawsuit that they filed against Commonwealth. And some of you may be familiar with what an injunction is, but just to enlighten you a little bit for those who aren't as familiar, Lexi filed a request to the Superior Court for injunction to enjoin Commonwealth, meaning stop Commonwealth from moving forward on the project. In it, they argued essentially the same arguments, along with a whole slew of other miscellaneous arguments similar to the presentation here today. Judge Desmond ruled on it, and I've attached that finding for you. And it specifically found that they don't have a substantial likelihood of success. He denied their request for injunction, and it relatively short order. Now, what I would suggest Attorney Hausler's client is trying to suggest this board is first, you know, you should be up in arms, and somehow you're being stripped of your power of this board. You know, when you don't have the facts, you argue motions, you know, when you have the facts, you stay with the facts. So if we take a look at what the facts are in this case, they're very simple. It's not complicated. There was a prior developer who has no relationship in any way, shape, or form to Commonwealth. That was CSDC. What happened with Lexi Development and the many parties who were involved internally with that, with any application they had, is absolutely irrelevant to what, between Commonwealth and this city and the various boards. So let's dispense with that. The next issue we look at is, what relevance does CSDC's applications before this body or other bodies have to do with Commonwealth? Again, none. So we dispense with those. Now, are there actions that were taken by various boards within the city that acted on plans that were affecting this property? Certainly. The 2012 plan, I'd suggest you, and take a close look at it, it's very simple. There's one notation down in the bottom box that says 15 feet existing, 15 feet proposed, asterisk next to it, double asterisk, and down the bottom it says variance required. That was 2012. If you take a look at the subsequent plan in 2013, you'll notice that the variance requirement is not there. It's in fact removed. It's different. Now, when we talk about whether or not a variance is needed, it's, you have your city law department who's opining and agreeing with the legal memorandum that we submitted. We think it's very clear, the case law is clear. And taking a step beyond that, even if you took the Dover Amendment out of it, the combination of easements addresses access. When your planning board, and when I say yours, I mean the City of Lowell's planning board, acted to accept the site plan, and I'm just going to, excuse me, I'm just going to read from one section of it. They made, they made a finding, which is legally enforceable, and it's something that certainly was considered by Judge Desmond, that when they acted on the ways and easements have been approved by the planning board and its site plan approval and special permit granted, it granted it, it was appropriate access and egress points to the subject parcel. And this echoes what Attorney Rosetti, Rosetti was saying to you, is that's in essence what we're talking about. Frontage is access. And here, there are two separate accesses to the property, which meet the requirements, two completely separate ones. How they're held, whether by fee simple easement or some other form, they give the proper access. The planning board voted on it. There is no need for a variance for anybody to come before this board respectfully and seek a variance for something that there's not a legal requirement to obtain. The last point I'll make is, the, when the planning board approved this, and there was action by the building commissioner in February, Lexi never opposed it. So we go to the issue of timeliness. You know, I'm always one for having matters heard on the merits, rather than having them disqualified because of timeless things of that matter. But here, it's clear. They were made aware in February that there was a ruling by the building commissioner that was appropriate access. In June, the building, June 9th, it was issued. They didn't file until well after the 30-day period. To somehow now suggest that, in fact, what they're actually, because they recognize, and I give Attorney Hausler credit, he's obviously a very intelligent individual, he recognizes that he missed the 30-day period. So he's got to somehow bootstrap it in under a letter to the building commissioner. The building commissioner sent it, sent the letter, and he files it the 17th, which is well past the mark. Think of, this should be denied for two reasons. One, it's clearly beyond the time standard. But even if you were going to give it a pass and take a look at the merits, the merits just aren't there for this petition to be successful. Coupled with the fact, and look at the practical application of where we are, we have a multimillion-dollar project with 525 students of a public school who are moving to this facility, relying upon, in good faith, the various boards of this town of Lowell, you know, their decisions and their outcomes, and opinions from the law department, opinions from the building commissioner, all of whom acted within the scope and power, their particular scope, statutory scope and power. There should be no reason to entertain this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? 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 Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Before I open it up to the board, I want to come back to a comment Mr. Pellegrino just made regarding the filing. I asked this question before, and was the filing of why this petition is before us this evening, was it filed in a timely fashion?
Yes, it was.
Mr. Hausler, I'm not talking, I'm not talking to you. I didn't ask for your opinion, I'm asking over here. Attorney Hausler, I'm not.
I know, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the response.
Okay.
If, as Attorney Hausler indicated, the appeal is as to the issuance of the building permit, then, then the petition is not timely, because that permit issued June 9th, 2015. That's what Attorney Hausler indicated on the record, was the subject of the petition. It's stated in his papers. And as I pointed out earlier, and as Attorney Pellegrino also pointed out, there was no appeal of the February 2015 determination by the building commissioner, his opinion that the easement satisfied the frontage requirements relative to the pending building permit application. There was no appeal of that, and more than 30 days elapsed from the June 9th, 2015 issuance of the building permit. If, so on those bases, I believe this board can find that the petition is untimely. Again, however, even if one puts aside the issue of timeliness, the merit is lacking in the petition. Again, the overlap between the Ellsworth case and this case indicates that easements can serve to address frontage issues with respect to the construction of a school. That point is made clear in Ellsworth. Again, admittedly not an appellate decision, but a decision that can be considered for its persuasive value. And again, given the overlap factually and legally, one that I believe should be considered by this board in evaluating the petitioner's petition.
Okay. So with that said, if the petition is to appeal the building commissioner's determination for appeal of issuance of the building permit, is that why we're here this evening?
I'm simply repeating or summarizing what Attorney Hausler indicated earlier on the record, which is that he's appealing the issuance, or his client is appealing the issuance of the building permit.
That's not accurate, sir. May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Not at this time, nope.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay. All right. Now, thank you, Mr. Rosetti. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board at this point. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not to continue to talk about timeliness, but I have a question about timeliness. If the, if the appeal was presented to the planning office beyond the timeframe that's allowed for an appeal, would it even be on the agenda tonight?
So there's a slight technicality where the decision regarding the issuance of the building permit was shared with Attorney Hausler, at which point he responded back to the building commissioner with a request to repeal that, or revoke that building permit. And the commissioner did not get back to him on that matter until a few weeks later. So my understanding is Attorney Hausler, on behalf of his client, is actually appealing that later response with the building commissioner deciding not to revoke the issuance, I mean, the request to revoke the building permit.
The, the letter from the building commissioner, at least the one that I was provided with, isn't dated.
It has a timestamp, sir.
Are we just going by the timestamp?
Yes. Because when such determinations are made, we have to record it at the clerk's office, and that's the, that's what, so any decision from a board, yes.
That's the official time.
Yes. It's the time we record it at the city clerk's office. That starts the clock.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had, Mr. Chairman, or I guess through you to the city attorney, is there anything in the Dover Amendment that expressly prohibits its application where there is, is it, in other words, is it only for a public school on public land being developed by a public authority or agency? Or is that not, not clear in the amendment? In other words, because in this case, it's a private developer leasing land to a public school entity?
Well, the Dover Amendment states to use the real property for religious and educational purposes and purposes. I would submit that Attorney Hausler's decision, moving on here, was initially the construction of a school under the Dover Amendment is, it's basically about foster creation of educational and similar, similar purposes.
All right, thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Fan?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Dennis?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question of the city solicitor, Mr. Rosetti. So the Dover Amendment seems to allow education and religious public institutions to not have the same restrictions from the zoning bylaws as other structures. Is that correct?
Well, that's kind of, perspective is kind of, I have a thought though, because both the Ellsworth case, in this case, which are schools, and the Ellsworth case more specifically, that Dover was reasonable for a frontage requirement to be enforced as to that sort of a requirement to be implemented. And on the issue of Dover.
Pardon me, Mr. Clerk, I've just been informed that I need to have my microphone on. My apologies, I get a sense that at least some of the folks here have been able to hear me. I brought up Dover again because of the overlap between Ellsworth in this case, both involving the construction of a school. There are, there are limitations on what can be prescribed by way of regulations on the use of the property for a property that would come under the Dover Amendment. My reason again in bringing it up with respect to this case is because in the Ellsworth case, Judge Along with Land Court looked at the reasonableness of enforcing a frontage requirement on a school in light of the Dover Amendment, and he said, yes, and we can consider easements, because ultimately, the issue of frontage relates to access. You gain access through easements. It was, it was deemed to be an adequate means of addressing frontage under the Mansfield bylaws.
And so I guess I just want to take it one step further. The idea of accepting easements as a reasonable way to meet frontage requirements for other projects, does that, does that translate beyond projects that don't meet the requirements of the Dover Amendment? For instance, if a private institution like a bank were looking to put a structure in or renovate this property, would the easement or access through the easement to meet the frontage work for that kind of thing?
I would, I would have to look into that for you and report back to the ZBA, to the extent the board wishes. I'd be happy to do that. Again, though, we're talking about a school.
No, I agree 100% in this. My interpretation of the Dover Amendment is that it is a bit of a broad brush, and this idea of zoning being less critical for projects that fall into the Dover Amendment is something that I'm familiar with myself in practicing architecture in NADAC for a museum there. So I, I think the city's done a great job of understanding what the possibility is of using the easement piece from the Ellsworth case. And so I think you've done a great job in doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Gary?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I do have a couple of questions for Attorney Hausler, if you don't mind. I'm really stuck on this issue of timeliness, quite frankly. You, when you first started your presentation, you said right off the bat that you were appealing the decision of the building commissioner, that with regards to the issuance of the building permit.
No, his decision not to overturn. He alone has the power.
Good.
Well, to issue a permit, you can't revoke his decision, you can overturn it. You can overturn, and that requires a denial. That's the issue.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure if that is the issue. So my understanding is the building commissioner issued his, putting aside the February determination by the building commissioner, issued his permit on June 9th.
He issued the building permit on June 9th, that's correct.
And you indicated you were notified around June 12th?
I was.
Okay. You said you spoke to someone. Who did you speak to?
Eric Slagel.
Okay.
Director of Development Planning, because this was a rather unique situation that we both were encountering for the first time. So in deference, I thought it appropriate to contact Mr. Slagel, who's both an attorney and director, and ask him for his, his idea of the appropriate process. Did I have to file an appeal within 20 days of the June 9th issuance? Or did I have to get a denial to get before this board? Or did I have to get a denial to get before this board? And his comment to me was, it's not ripe until, this board can't hear it, until you give the opportunity to the Building Inspector, who issued it without any input from us, to say reconsidered, and then if he fails to revoke his own decision, which only he can do, his determination not to do so is then appealable to this board. And that's the process I followed all the way through, very timely, and literally within days of each step. And I, quite frankly, expected the Building Commissioner on June 16th or 17th to send a letter to me saying, denied, and then within 10 days, just like I did, I'd appeal. But I can't even submit the paperwork to the city absent that denial letter. And that's just what I did. The day I got the denial letter, we went into immediate mode, and we filed, I think, within five days.
Okay. Well, I mean, being a practicing attorney, I'm familiar with the statute, and my understanding is that it's 30 days from the denial, and that's it. I mean, so, I'm understanding what you probably went through, but based on what I'm seeing, and I'll present this to Attorney Rosetti, I don't, and maybe you can clarify, does the board, I don't, the fact that the denial, the building permit was issued in June 9th, and Attorney Housler, for his client, did not submit the appeal until July 17th, he would be outside of the 30 days, so therefore, would the board even have, do we even have power to listen to this? Because I don't think, I think he's outside, he's untimely, so I would have to listen to the Law Department, what their opinion is of this.
Again, I would go back to my comment earlier, Mr. Callahan, about what it is specifically the petitioner is appealing. If it's an appeal of the Building Commissioner's denial or decision to deny revocation of the building permit, then the petitioner's material is arguably timely. But I go back to what the gentleman said earlier, Attorney Housler said earlier, which was, and I heard the same thing, Mr. Callahan, we're appealing the decision to issue the building permit. That's what I believe the record will reflect at the end of the day. If that's the case, I think there were timeliness problems here. But separate and apart from that, the petition is independently worthy of denying solely on the basis of issues of merit. So even if there were no timeliness issues, the merit is completely lacking in the petition. And on that basis alone, the board can deny the petition.
No, thank you for that. I just think as a board, we got to try to get over the hump of whether or not we even have the power to hear this appeal, and based on my understanding of the law, and based on what I'm hearing from Attorney Housler, he's untimely, and he can't, and I don't think we even have the power to address this. So, but even putting that aside, Attorney Housler, I do have one other question pertaining to the statute, and I reviewed all the materials, and I understand what the corollary background is of the matter, but one of the things under the statute is that the party that is to come before the board is an aggrieved party. And I haven't heard anything from you, or even in the materials, other than the fact that your client is in a butter and just owns abiding property, as to how they are actually aggrieved by the granting of the, well, by the granting of the thing by the Building Commissioner.
So the answer is, we're an aggrieved party by definition of law. We are in a butter within 300 feet by statute. We automatically have standing to pursue this by statute. It is then up to the city, if it disputes that, to refute in court, to shift that burden back to the applicant, to assert there is no aggrieved status. And the issue of standing then would get decided by a court. In the instance before this board, all I have to demonstrate is that I'm in a butter within 300 feet, which we are, absolutely, and that automatically gives us standing. So your reasoning is incorrect.
Okay. Well, again, no, thank you for responding, but with all due respect, and again, my understanding is, I don't even think this board has the power to address your appeal, unless you have other, unless you have some other authority that you're aware of...
I certainly think that...
That would, no, that I'm not aware of. My understanding is that the SJC has actually ruled on this, that, you know, 30 days and that's it, regardless of when, you know, there is no buffer zone, there is no other thing, it's 30 days from the issuance of the ruling.
I agree. Well, we're appealing, so we're clear, and it was made clear to Mr. Slagel when I discussed it with him, who's overseeing that whole process, to make sure there was compliance. We have to, we cannot submit any kind of a legal challenge to the initial issuance of the building permit until such time as we have the request into the Building Commissioner himself to say, you've made an error, please reconsider. And at that point, if he denies that request to overturn his own decision, only then do I have the right to file, and in fact, your application form requires a denial letter from the Building Commissioner. And we didn't have that by Mr. Shanahan's admission to us until July 17th. So therefore, there was nothing that we could do to file any moment earlier, because otherwise we'd be argued that we're anticipating it, and it's not ripe yet because we haven't gone through the process administratively. I checked that with Mr. Slagel, I went, literally, I've called him several times about it to make sure that we were timely all the way through. And if this board decides that it wants to disagree with that, I understand where you're going with it, I don't agree with you, but that leads to other issues at a later point. I'm just telling you what actually occurred. I believe we were timely, I still believe we were timely, we followed the directions of the city planning officer in development, we can't get any higher authority on it. And I felt we were completely compliant with the notice requirements, and we acted very, very timely and swiftly.
Well, I'll have to disagree with you on that, Attorney Housler. The statute's pretty clear as to what the deadlines are, and with all due respect, I just, I don't believe that you're timely on this, and I don't think that this board has the power to even consider this appeal based on that. That's my opinion, so, but thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Well, I guess based on everything that's been discussed this evening, and whether things are timely or not, I think that's obviously debatable right now, but I don't think that's the main point of why we're here, the timeliness.
That's true.
And I think the various parties have explained that. And I know when I reviewed Sections 8 and 15 regarding the petitioner being here this evening, again, I'm not going to pretend to be the lawyer and ascertain, but I read through it, and I have my opinions on that. But I believe this evening, we're being asked to take a look at the facts, and Attorney Housler, you actually mentioned burden, and that's something that, you know, I've looked at and I've been looking for from you tonight. You know, I believe the burden does rest with you in your presentation, and so far, based on all the facts that have been put out there, I did not hear anything new since the Planning Board decision. I didn't hear anything new providing any support around why you believe this board needs to take the action that it does. Regarding the frontage, again, you had an opening statement regarding what your thoughts were on procedurally what had happened, you talked about drawings, you talked about a lot of different things, but based on the information that I have and the public meetings that were conducted, and there was a comment that you or your representatives were at the public meeting for the Planning Board, I don't know that for a fact, but there was nothing that I saw presented that is in deference to that. And then I keep going back to the Planning Board decision, and I ask the question, and I know it was answered over here, but I believe after reviewing, that Planning Board decision was very lengthy, and there were a number of conditions.
Yes.
Not once did I find anything about frontage.
Nor in the decision does it say it has frontage, sir.
Well, I'm only going on what I know by public record and what I'm able to review.
That's what I'm pointing out to you, yes, sir.
So, based on the burden that I believe you needed to present this evening, and any new information that was going to come forward, I have not seen anything new presented this evening. I appreciate your efforts, but I'll speak for myself as the chairman, based on what I've heard this evening, and based on the presentations of some of the participants here this evening, and comments made by the city solicitor's office, and also by DPD, and even comments from the board, I really did not find anything new that you were presenting this evening that would change my mind based on the Building Commissioner's decision. So with that, any other board members have any other comments? Okay. So, Swathy, my understanding is we would take a vote regarding the petition, the way it's stated, and it's either approve or deny, correct? Okay. So could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2015-029 to appeal the Building Commissioner's determination for the property at 1857.1 Middle 6th Street. That's it.
Could I have a second?
Second.
A roll call.
Mr. Bailey?
Denied.
Mr. Callahan?
Denied.
Mr. McCarthy?
Denied.
Mr. Paglia?
Denied.
Mr. Peck?
Denied.
Mr. Perrin?
Denied.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Housler.
Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen.
Yep, thank you. Okay, seeing as we have no other matters before us, next meeting is scheduled for?
Sorry, what was that?
Our next meeting is scheduled for?
Yes, yes, 24th, Monday, 24th.
Well, you never know, they could change things, they don't tell the chairman. Okay. All right. Any other comments, any board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yep, sure. Go ahead.
Swathy won't be here on the 24th, she's leaving the city's employ on the 21st, so I wanted to thank her. I'm a fairly new member to the board, and she was one of the people that helped orient me to the board and the process, and so I wanted to thank her for that and thank her for her service to the city.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I too would like to extend my thanks to Swathy for her advice, her interpretation of the zoning code as well as the planning code, and particularly her kindness to the citizens throughout her process, especially over the last few petitions. You've done yeoman's work to ensure that the citizens have access, have due process, and you've always been candid, and you've always been timely in providing us with materials. And you also were very implemental in the resurgence of paperless. And I did make a comment a while back, just to receive full-size plans, and I know you carried that through, and I greatly appreciate, and I wish you the best of luck in all your endeavors.
Thank you, Gary. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I too would like to thank Swathy for her service and support and great work that you've done supporting the board here, and I wish you well in your future endeavors.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I want to echo the sentiments of the board. You know, I personally enjoy working with you, I think you are a wealth of knowledge, and all your feedback and comments were very valuable. I felt like it had a lot of constructive comments, and it made us really think about decisions of all the petitions we had, so I wish you luck in your next chapter. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Swathy again, obviously share everybody's sentiments, and thank you very much for all your assistance, and you're just so helpful in providing all the information that was well needed, and I wish you the very best of luck, and hopefully your commute is a lot more, less stressful.
Thank you all for your kind words. Thank you very much.
Oh, but wait a minute, wait a minute, the best, the best. Wow. Disrespecting the chairman on your last meeting.
Sorry, I know, I have jumped the gun, sorry.
No, I'll be very brief. Swathy, I think you know what I, how I feel about you, you know, I always can count on you to come through, and I don't know who you report to these days, but obviously they're going to get a phone call tomorrow because we're not going to get you to stay. But you're a good, very good poker player, I'll tell you that, you know? I was telling everybody how I was meeting with you earlier, and you didn't say one thing about the email, and I said, oh, real good poker player. But, no, thank you very much for your services and your support to the board, it's always appreciated. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, with that said, and Mr. Rosetti, thank you very much for attending this evening, appreciate it.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. And so could I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
So moved.